I want to go ahead and put mine on paper and we'll pass them down. You can feel free to take a look at them and if others have recommendations that they've already thought about and want to share in writing, feel free to do that. Otherwise, we'll take those up at the appropriate time in the agenda. Secondly, we have, so there are no agenda modifications. We were sort of single issue today. Secondly, I want to alert the public that we do take public comment. There are forms in the back of the room. In fact, if you have not completed one of those and you would like to speak, you can go ahead and let us know your interest and then complete the form so that we have that for the public record. The items will be brought forward today by the treasurer clerk as well as the city attorney. And we'll make sure that we refer to you at the appropriate time. At this time, I think it's appropriate to go ahead and hear from the public. Mr. Treasurer Clerk, are there any speakers?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We do have two speakers. And as you said, there may be others who wish to speak and if they can indicate that, there's a box at the back of the speaker form and somebody can alert me if they don't have time to fill out that form before their comments. The first speaker is Curtis Baines. He'll be followed by Erwin Jackson. Just, I believe both of these gentlemen are well aware, but I'll remind the public that each speaker has three minutes for his or her remarks. We would appreciate a name and address for our record as you begin. I'll also add, if you have anything that needs to be handed out or distributed, you can just hand those to me as Mr. Baines just did. That way, I'll have a copy for the record and I can distribute a copy to each of you. And with that, Mr. Baines, you may begin.
Mr. Baines, go ahead and begin your comments.
Thank you, Curtis Baines, 1323 East Tennessee Street. I wanted to take a moment to share with you some comments that may enter into your discussions that there are a lot of options on your agenda to discuss. I've tried to break it down and confine it into smaller portions. First, and I'll just take each of the options as we go through it. Option one and two, deal with incorporating in the city ordinance language that is already in the state law. What I'm proposing is for the discussion is that we just expand the authority of the Ethics Committee to include not just violations of the city ethics ordinance, but violations of section 112, chapter 112 as well. Now, a couple of meetings ago, I was at a city commission meeting and I heard several people express some concerns about double jeopardy and being, you know, having to face complaints at the state and at the local. So what I've tried to do in handing, in the handout, is try to provide a section that creates an authority for the Ethics Board to investigate complaints about violations of chapter 112 as well as the city ordinance. And in the second part, Part B, is a provision that they shall consider any complaints that may have been delivered to the state Ethics Board. I understand, you know, we're not here to try to, you know, try to make this an overwhelming process where we commit people to ethics purgatory or something like that, but we want to have some kind of rational approach to dealing with ethics issues and complaints. Option number three in your packet pertains to the reporting requirements, which just adds a section into your current ordinance dealing with reporting. I don't think that's a big critical issue. Option four is deals with appointing another person to the board and that's going to be a, am I popping?
Just want to make one clarification. One of the commissioners was asking, I believe he's referencing numbers on the agenda item. He gave you a handout that was distributed, but I believe the numbers you're referencing are options on the agenda item.
Well, no, okay, let me, I'll leave it to the city attorney. I went to the municipal code of Tallahassee Code and pulled those numbers out from there. So whatever Muni Code has is what those numbers are. So if they're not the exact numbers, I'll let the attorney work it out. The issue on option four is, of course, who's going to be appointing the person that is going to be replacing the vacant position. Option five is housekeeping. I don't see a big issue with that. I'm a little bit conflicted about option six, which deals with sworn complaints. I don't know that, how necessary it is to have sworn complaints to initiate an inquiry. I know at some point, a lot of this information is going to be sworn to by someone.
Excuse me, that's three minutes. Thank you very much, Mr. Baines. We've got your, I assume, the remainder of your recommendations on paper.
Can I just finish up with option seven? Well, option seven deals with going to the Division of Administrative Hearings and I'm not real sure why, you know, I'm not real sure why we would want to do that. We've got, we've got a lot of retired judges in Leon County who I think could probably fulfill that need as well.
Great, thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Erwin Jackson. And at this point, that's the only additional speaker I have, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff. Very disappointing, we've got six minutes to talk about ethics from the citizens. That's probably too much time anyway. Two things we're looking at. This newspaper says that Rick Fernandez lied when he took tickets that he swore to you folks he didn't take. Documents in here prove that he and the mayor have stolen assets for the citizens of Tallahassee. Someone should take a look at this. I'm going to, FDLE I think will as well. On the ethics, three things, four things we need to do. We need to have a whistleblower, if you're serious about it. You notice I had about 15 city employees come to talk to me about ethical and criminal problems. Mr. Attorney, they probably didn't call you, did they? The mayor, I don't think they talked with him. We need a whistleblower protection and I'll tell you why. We need to have the whole confidential, it has to be confidential complaints. If they have to sign their names, city employees are going to be scared to death. We need to have the subpoena power. We need to have real fines and I'm talking thousands of dollars plus return of the money that was taken. And we need a new ethics policy that needs to be written by the chairman and the Ethics Commission. This was supposed to be independent and somehow everyone here forgot, think it's really the city commission's ethics policy. No, it needs to be an independent ethics policy. A few minutes ago, I got a phone call. There was a young man who went out and fixed the swimming pool for Mr. Fernandez. One City Time, using city equipment, city trucks, he called me, he's scared to death. He got a call this morning early after I had my press conference that Mike Tadros called him into his office. He's ready to be fired. We need to protect that young man and I'll be sure and share with you his name, but all I could do was go talk to Mr. Tadros myself. I have a video of this conversation. We'll be sharing it publicly. There is a criminal element. This man, Fernandez, is the head of it. Tadros is the enforcer and Potter's running around doing the dirty deeds. I went in and talked with Mr. Tadros and I asked a simple question. I said, he swore he knew nothing about the swimming pool. He knows nothing about the thousands of dollars fixing up his daughter's house. I asked Tadros, no, I know nothing about it. Don't know anything. He's protecting the city manager. I then to Mr. Tadros, how did you find out, since there's no documentation that this even took place, how did you find out that this little guy did the work? It took him 30 minutes to identify who this person is. So I promised Mr. Tadros, and I'm going to ask this commission, if you will take a vote decision, direct this man over here not to fire a single individual in the underground utility department until this entire matter is taken care of.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I also promise that the defense fund is running over for this young man. If you fire him, all hell will be paid.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Wish we had a little bit more time.
Thank you very much. As I said yesterday, certainly your claims are wholly false as they relate to me. You have, all I, sir, you had your time to speak, okay? All I'm, listen, the only person who continues to take you seriously is yourself in the local media, but you ought to let folks have their appropriate, okay, all right, sure, sure. From your mouth to God's ears. Commissioners, we're now on to the next item, the introduction of the item, I should say. Sir, you can either, you can either have decorum. Sir, we're going to proceed with this meeting today. You can have decorum or you can leave. That's your choice. You can have decorum or leave. We're done, okay? All right, Commissioners, we're now going to have introduction of the item by the treasurer clerk and the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, in a September meeting, you requested a workshop to discuss recommendations that you have received from our independent Ethics Board. What we'd like to do is just give you a little bit of a background and then give you a chance to hear from Richard Herring, the chair of that independent Ethics Board regarding their recommendations, and then leave most of the time for your discussion of these items and direction to staff. In the agenda item, as it was presented to you, there are a number of options listed. They're each listed individually so that you may, as you conclude your discussions, take action on them individually, either up or down or separate direction. Items one through four are things that have come to you from the Ethics Board and Mr. Herring will speak more to that in a moment. And then the other items, five to seven, are things that either you have discussed, staff's discussed, or the Ethics Board has discussed in some capacity. And so they're all pertinent to this discussion. Just a little bit of background for the public and maybe even for some of you, but the city commission appointed an ethics advisory panel in 2012. Some of you were on the commission at that time, some of you were not. That group met regularly for a period of time and upon presenting their recommendations, that group was disbanded. They had a time-limited service. So in July of 2013, they presented some recommendations. As a city commission, those items were discussed in a couple of target issue workshops much like this one, with a significant number of those recommendations adopted. Most of the ones that were adopted were exactly as they were recommended, some with some changes based on your deliberations. Just for information, a couple of things they had discussed but didn't bring forward. One was, for instance, campaign finance reform, changing contribution limits for city races and that sort of thing. They did not bring anything forward there. They did not bring forward a recommendation for a separate Ethics Board. They did have an advisory board, which largely would have been in place to follow through with their recommendations, which you've already taken in action on. Obviously, as you know, subsequently, a citizen group gathered sufficient signatures to place a charter amendment on the ballot in November of 2014. That amendment passed, is putting in place the independent Ethics Board. As you're well aware, that board has five representatives appointed by FAMU President, FSU President, Chief Judge of the Second Judicial Circuit, State Attorney of the Second Judicial Circuit, and one by U.S. City Commission. That group appointed then selects the additional two members per the charter language. Since that time, the Ethics Board meets on a regular basis. They meet every month and part of their charge from the charter amendment was to bring recommendations regarding ordinances, resolutions, and charter changes to you, which is exactly what they've done. And just before I call Mr. Herring forward and let him speak for the board, I don't want to speak for them, let him do that, just point out that they bring recommendations. You take action just as you did with the Ethics Advisory Panel. These things will come to you and you can take them up. As we've seen, we have a couple of other suggestions that have been made here that you may want to follow up on as well. After Mr. Herring speaks, the city attorney may want to give you some thoughts or comments regarding ordinance process and that sort of thing, but largely it'll be for you to discuss. If you have any other questions on that, fine, and suits the mayor, then I'll ask Mr. Herring to come forward. I think we have a solo microphone for you right here, or if you'd rather stand at the lectern, that'd be fine as well. Generally speaking, you can present your remarks, but if they interrupt you, one of us will give you a heads up, but I have a feeling they'll want to hear what you have to say and then there may be some questions when you conclude.
Thank you. I'm Richard Herring, 1110 Ivanhoe Road. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, the Ethics Board appreciates you scheduling this hearing to talk about our recommendations. And I'd like to take a moment to thank the men and women who work for the city for a lot of great support for the board, from this room to a lot of other things that we have done, and their seemingly tireless efforts to make Tallahassee a great place to live. As we've gotten the Ethics Board up and running over the last two and a half years, both this commission and the board have resolved difficult procedural and substantive issues and will face more. This is an iterative process where we learn as we act and we act as we learn. So I expect at some point in the future, a chair of the Ethics Board will be back here talking to you about similar issues, a year, two down, three years down the road. I know that each of you has thought hard about how the Ethics Board can best serve the people of Tallahassee, and I want to thank you for your recognition of our independence. I also want to assure you that I and the other board members do not believe that the city Ethics Board should be in the business of playing gotcha just for the sake of finding minor technical flaws in the system. I think we can be guided in part by the legislative intent, or one of the legislative intent statements, in the state ethics law. And it says, paraphrased slightly, "It's essential that government attract those citizens best qualified to serve. Thus, the law against conflict of interest must be so designed as not to impede unreasonably or unnecessarily the recruitment and retention by government of those best qualified to serve. Public officials should not be denied the opportunity available to all other citizens to acquire and retain private economic interests, except when conflicts with responsibility of such officials to the public cannot be avoided." That said, our independent Ethics Board is directly dependent on this commission in three vital areas. First, you provide the budget resources that allow us to meet regularly and allow us to be advised by knowledgeable staff. Second, you set by ordinance the sanctions that can be imposed by the board for ethics violations. And third, you create, again by ordinance, the jurisdiction of the board. You've already acted on the first two items. Your budget covers our normal operations and has adequate funding to cover the unknown costs of the campaign finance program or campaign refund program, as well as costs of any formal ethics investigation that we may need to undertake in the future. And you've given us an array of possible sanctions that could be imposed based on the severity of future ethics violations that we may find. This workshop covers the third item, our jurisdiction. The Charter of the City of Tallahassee gives the Ethics Board authority to investigate complaints as authorized by the city commission for violations of the city ethics code. Today, the city ethics code addresses the following five topics and no others. Enhanced financial disclosure for elected city officials. Disclosure requirements for lobbyists who represent the city. Disclosure of offers of employment to elected city officials. Voting abstention. And ethics training. Concerning the city ethics code, the Charter requires our Ethics Board to assist this commission in the development of the ethics code and to recommend proposed ordinances in all areas of ethics and corruption. And we have done that now for the first time and you will see, I'm sure, in future years, more recommendations come from the board. Finally, the Charter requires that the legislative proposals from us be filed with this commission and be considered by this commission, which is what you were doing today. We've made several recommendations concerning changes in non-ordinance city policy and you have responded to each of these. They include tracking outside employment, gift policies, anti-fraternization policies, and clarifications of lobbyist registration requirements. As a result of a self-evaluation spanning several months' meetings at the end of last calendar year and the beginning of this calendar year, we also submitted to this commission a series of recommendations and draft ordinances that would expand our jurisdiction. The three draft ordinances you have in front of you today, the first is misuse of position. We put this at the top of our list and we think that is supported by the annual reports of the Florida Commission on Ethics. In their last annual report, they indicated that of 132 complaints investigated in 2016, 72 or 55% involved misuse of position, far and away the greatest category. Second ordinance in front of you is, from us, is acceptance of gifts that might influence official behavior. We feel generally that soliciting gifts should be off the table, but receiving gifts for yourself or your immediate family, when those gifts might influence official behavior, is likely to create an atmosphere of mistrust. And third, local filing and accessibility of Form 1 financial disclosures for elected city officials. These are already public documents and ultimately, I have to say, we'd like to see those Form Ones posted on the city website. No one may ever go and look at them, but putting them out there enhances public trust in our view. We've also suggested some other topics where we have not drafted proposed ordinances for you. First would be use of city resources for campaign purposes, other than those resources generally available to the public like use of the city's Wi-Fi canopy. Second, clarification of the board's authority relating to city vendors performing services previously delivered by the city, outsourced services. It's unclear to us. Clearly, a city employee performing a service would come under the city ethics code. We're not sure that a private company providing that exact same service, being paid for by tax dollars, is necessarily under the code. And third would be failure to register as a lobbyist representing others for compensation on city matters. And of course, we'd be happy to work with you in the future on the development of any other proposals. And if there's anything you want drafted from us, I'm sure that we would be more than happy to do that. And finally, as has been mentioned, we would be happy to see in any future charter amendment that you might be considering, a provision that would allow our seventh member to be appointed. We've operated from day one without that seventh member and without a change to the charter, we will continue to operate without that seventh member. I sincerely hope our board is able to highlight the value to all of us when decisions are made and actions taken with ethics in mind. And I hope that all of us can feel proud of our work and our decisions and that the public will feel increasingly confident that we place our service to them ahead of our personal interests. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the chairman? Commissioner Richardson?
Just a quick question. On the gifts, I don't remember the exact language and I don't have it in front of me, but you used the word "might" when it "might influence a vote." How would you define "might"?
We've submitted language in the draft proposal and I think it falls in several categories. It's the timing of a gift in relation to decisions. This is not in the ordinance, but in my mind. The timing of a gift in relation to decisions, the relationship of the gift giver to the gift recipient, and the, I guess, dollar value of the gift, the size of the gift. I always fall back for wisdom on the little things that my mother taught me. She grew up on a small family farm. I still have pictures of my grandfather plowing a field with mule during the Depression and said that their life didn't change. She knew that as a child, there was a depression, but it didn't change anything. At Christmas, I watched my mother, this is in the days of $1.75 minimum wage, I would watch my mother go out and give each of the guys on the garbage collection crew a $20 bill and give the mailman, it was a mailman then, not a postal worker, give the mailman a $20 bill at Christmas. I don't think any of us think that those types of gifts detract from society or those are the kinds of things that we're interested in getting. I lived next door to a wonderful lady who is recently widowed and if I see her take a bottle of Gatorade out to a power line worker, I would, that to me is a positive thing, not a negative thing. But somewhere you cross a line and I don't know exactly where that line is and I don't know that we can define a hard line. I think you can put a dollar value, a dollar limit on things, but again, it has to do with timing and the nature of relationships.
Thank you. It's like pornography, you know it when you see it.
I can certainly tell you my mother would have known it when she saw it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, if there are no other questions, Mr. Treasurer Clerk, we'll have you and the city attorney go up to the item.
Okay. As was pointed out, one thing that I may not have mentioned in my opening comments, we do also include in the options the discussion of an external audit of the city commission office, so we'll come back to that in a moment. But as Mr. Herring just outlined, the first item, there's an attachment one, an attachment two, and an attachment three to the agenda item. Each of those is language that was provided from the independent Ethics Board for your consideration. I'll let the city attorney speak to anything there regarding specific language or relation to state statute, except I will point out that the current state law for each of those attachments, one and two, is included on the bottom of the attachment so you can see the statutory reference. Mr. City Attorney?
And ladies and gentlemen, I think everyone except Commissioner Richardson has that, it has the attachment. We're getting those attachments printed out right now so that you'll have the exact proposal from the independent Ethics Board and the current, the exact state law on that. While we're waiting on that for a minute, I would like to go ahead and make a couple of comments about proposals to be considered by you as a group. First of all, we did have seven specific items or options that we'd like before we complete this workshop for you folks to consider and either decide to approve, modify, reject, or not take up each of those items. So it's clear that we have dealt with the issues that the independent Ethics Board has presented. We also have, as number eight, additional, provide additional information or additional direction. And both the mayor and Commissioner Ziffer have pointed to other areas or suggested other language or topics that ought to be covered. Previously, Commissioner Ziffer, for example, suggested, and this is covered in the agenda item, that we ought to have sworn complaints. And so we put that as an item to discuss among yourselves when we get to the discussion part of it. So that is definitely an option we want some input on. I think everyone realizes that there's some value and there's no desire to discontinue the current hotlines that allow for verbal concerns to be expressed and reviewed by the independent ethics officer. I think there have been concerns expressed that, to the extent that those morph into investigations for which yourselves or other employees could be penalized, that they ought to be sworn complaints as the basis of those. So we'll ask you to express some opinion on that. Secondly, Commissioner Ziffer suggested that we give you some information and produce some options on auditing the budgets of the commission office. And Raul Levin, the ACM over administrative services, has provided some language that we incorporated, indicating that we've tried that in part in the past. We, in fact, for about a five-year period, did ask our outside auditor to audit travel and see if it was in compliance with our standard operating travel policy and procedures that we use throughout the organization. After a five-year examination of that, there were no discrepancies that had been filed, so the city commission voted to discontinue that. You can certainly pick that process back up, by which I mean contracted with the outside CPAs that audit the city's entire budget. And if you want to audit the entire commission budget, which will include not only travel but other purchases, would include personnel practices, all those things for which we have standard city policies and see if they're compliant, you could certainly do that. And the estimation has been given by our current outside auditors are anywhere from five percent...
Seventy-five hundred to 25,000 on an annual basis.
Again, depending, that range depending on what the specific assignments might be. So those are two things that have been brought by other commissioners. I know that the mayor and perhaps other, you have other items you want to bring up and discuss today and that's certainly appropriate and it's certainly desirable to have that discussion and items from anybody, any other member that hasn't formalized them to bring up. up a topic for discussion. I would also say that in the agenda item, I intentionally included two other items that I'm going to ask you to look at and consider. And this would be listed in your agenda item under options six and seven. Item number six is, well, I'm strongly recommending, but it is also the same as Commissioner Ziffer has previously raised, the issue about sworn complaints. Item number seven is the recommendation that the city Independent Ethics Board utilize the Division of Administrative Hearing of the State of Florida. Those administrative law judges do nothing, day by day, but hear administrative complaints, including any complaint coming for a hearing by the State Commission on Ethics. And these folks are thoroughly qualified to hear all kinds of administrative procedures, issues. We utilize, the city utilizes DOA when we have, in certain land use cases where we need to make factual, have a factual record and make factual findings. It's then would come to you finally for the application of the ordinance and the final decision is yours. In the case of the Independent Ethics Board, it would still come to the Ethics Board for the application of the ordinance, but there would be a recommended order from DOA, and this is their normal procedure, of all the factual findings, and then you, the Independent Ethics Board would still make the final rulings on matters of application of the ordinance provisions to the factual findings. The penalties would still be entirely up to the Independent Ethics Board. So many county and city functions around the state utilize this service. You pay for this service, but they have a group of independent administrative law judges that actually do the hearings. So we would recommend that, that if there's going to be a hearing, it's conducted by folks that we know are fully qualified and routinely are applying basic administrative law to various kinds of situations. Let me also just make a couple of other comments that deal with comments from the citizens that have spoken already. First of all, there is a statewide whistleblower statutory provision that applies to all city employees and all citizens of the state. And in fact, we have had over the years, in my 25 years as either deputy or city attorney, we've had a couple of lawsuits where whistleblower claims have been brought, both in federal court and in state court. So I want to assure you that the whistleblower aspect of it, which I do think is important, it's already, our employees who complain are already protected under state law, very specifically. So, and I think, are we ready to...
I think we've covered what we need to put in front of.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, I think in terms of normal process, and you be in charge of the discussion and recognition, we're ready at this point to go through the specific options that are identified, that identify specific provisions that you would like to be considered, and then certainly under option number eight, additional direction, that will give all of you an opportunity to suggest additional or different things. One final thing that I'm going to pass out to you is the provision in state law, because there's a citizen, the first citizen's speaker input suggested that the city just adopt the current Chapter 112 as part of our ethics ordinance. What I've given to you is Chapter 112.326. That gives, everybody have that, it's not specific language that I've given to you before. You need another one?
New one, yeah, I got something already.
Chapter 112, which is the State Ethics Code, Chapter 112, and the specific provision that gives local governments and local ethics boards the authority to have additional requirements. The language specifically says that nothing in the state ethics law shall prevent the governing body, that is the city in this case, by ordinance or by rule, imposing upon its own officers and employees additional or more stringent standards of conduct and disclosure requirements than those specified in this part. Then it also provides, it says those standards of conduct and disclosure, as long as they do not conflict with. So from this city attorney's perspective, the question is always, when somebody says, we ought to just adopt Chapter 112 as our ordinance and apply everything the state does, is this even within your authority of a local board when you say additional or more stringent? And unfortunately, we don't have a lot of guidance on what that means. For example, if we talk about the gift law and we change the language from with corrupt intent to intentional action, that is a change, and that is additional, and it makes it easier to prosecute those kind of violations. You don't have to prove corruption. Should that apply then throughout everything that is in the city's asset code? I would say it does. Does it apply in a situation when a violation of the state gift law, clearly on its face, is not additional or more stringent? In other words, by adopting a different standard of which you look at a thing, does that make it appropriate, and quite honestly, in compliance with the statute, that you can then loop all of the provisions in the state ethics law to be covered under that? The State Ethics Board has not taken a specific position on this, and to the best of our knowledge, both in talking with them and also researching ourselves, we've not been able to find a specific case, either appellate case or a circuit court case that deals with this. This is particularly important if you look at a situation where what has been described as double jeopardy. A complaint, as an example, could be filed, an ethics complaint, before the Independent Ethics Board. And simultaneously, or later, could be, the exact complaint could be filed with the State Ethics Board. There's nothing in place right now, and it could be filed by the same person, or it could be filed by a different citizen at the state level, in my example. There's no mechanism that I'm aware of, and that could be pointed to by the folks in charge at the State Ethics Commission, that currently prevent that, that talk about any kind of deferral situation and acknowledgement. And there's certainly nothing in state law that prevents a similar, if not identical, complaint being filed by two people in the two different forums. And so, as you, I don't want this to be a basis on which you don't, well, if we can't have clarity here, we ought not to consider any additional jurisdiction of our local board. I'm not suggesting that at all, but I am suggesting that it's, those concerns about what we are calling, or some of you have called, double jeopardy are real, and we unfortunately don't have a lot of clarity on that. And I think, I've discussed this at length with the Independence Ethics Board on Council Chair Kern, and I think he would agree that there's very little decisional law or statutory law on this provision at all. So having said all that, Mr. Mayor, I think it's appropriate for all these topics to be left with you folks for discussion, and ultimately, if we can have a vote on each option.
Yeah, it was my hope that maybe you all could present each option. We'll do questions or debate or conversation, and then a vote on each.
The, I'll identify then, the option one is, as stated in your item, is to direct the city attorney's office to introduce a proposed ordinance regarding elected and appointed officials and misuse of position. As that option says, there would be a proposed ordinance. Language for that proposed ordinance, again, that's one of the recommendations coming from the Independent Ethics Board. So attachment one identifies misuse of public position. The proposed language is as shown there, a definition of misuse of public, or a description of misuse of public position, followed by definitions to add some clarification. The current state law obviously would not be part of the proposed language, but is provided for your information where there is misuse of position description. It's a single-page item. I'll point out, and the city attorney may have other remarks, but distinctions from state law, the state law in that item identifies that no public officer shall corruptly use or attempt, and the proposed language for the ordinance would be that no city official shall intentionally use or attempt, and the distinction there is those two words, and I believe that was part of the city attorney's remarks, that using intentionally provides a more stringent standard than the state statute might. The other item added in the proposed ordinance is at the very end, it says valued at more than $25, so it provides a dollar figure for those cases where you are looking for that. And those are the, that's what's before you.
And Mayor, you may want, on these first four discussions, to have Ms. Melis Keith, the Independent Ethics Officer, and Mr. Herring come up to the table, because if there are questions on a specific proposal, they certainly are in better position to talk about the intent of their board in recommending these than either Mr. Cook or I would be.
Great. The two of you are certainly invited to join us at the table. There's a microphone there in the center. Commissioners, is there any discussion or questions on the first item? Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having served in the legislature and been subject to the state standard when it comes to the acceptance of gifts and misuse of public position, you know, we always, we had to live under the statute that we couldn't accept any gift of any value, and it didn't cause a problem for me. I haven't heard of any problems that it's causing for legislators now. I don't see why that wouldn't apply or shouldn't apply to commissioners in the city of Tallahassee. So I would move that we adopt the state language, or direct the city attorney to bring us back language that reflects what the state requires in terms of...
I think you need to distinguish what may be required or prohibited by state legislature and lobbyists. I think the actual state language for under 112, throughout Florida right now, is not any gift, okay? And I think what they're, one of the things that they are trying to do is to change it down to de minimis, or define de minimis to be $25, and at the same time, to change the requirement of intent from corruptly to intentionally. Now, Julie, you and Richard may want to add to that, or certainly tell them if I've got that wrong.
Is there a second one to the adjustment, which is to go to the, there are two changes fundamentally. One is on going from $25 in value to no value.
Right.
And I think the other consequential piece is corrupt versus intentional. Is there a second to that?
Let me, I'm sorry, I'm not clear. So you want to go to the state language that says no gifts of any value?
The gift one is different than the first one.
Right. My confusion.
Me too.
On the first one is the current state law, which is standard of Congress, and this is the language in 112.313. Are you suggesting we adopt that language?
Right.
Okay.
Which is...
Commissioner Maddox, can you pull your microphone closer?
I apologize.
Thank you.
So if you're suggesting that we adopt a language in 112.313, which prohibits any gift of any value?
No, you, these are two different things. Attachment one...
Maybe I must have it wrong.
You're correct. I mean, Commissioner, I think what's consequential in this particular recommendation is the changing of the language from intentionally to corrupt. Commissioner Ziffer?
Could you explain once again, because I think we're lost in translation? We can't adopt anything identical to state. All we can is adopt something that is more stringent.
What I'm suggesting is that the current language in the Florida statute suggests it's additional or more stringent, and Julie, you and Richard may want to address that particular point.
No, but my question though is, we can't adopt identical language. We have to adopt language that is more stringent than state. Is that, did I understand it correctly when we had a conversation?
I think, I would certainly say that's the case, but I would also say that both of the provisions that are brought forth by the Independent Ethics Board do have more stringent language in them.
Right.
Okay.
Commissioner Maddox?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, that what was handed out is additional requirements by political subdivisions and agencies not prohibited. So nothing in this act shall prohibit the governing body of any political subdivision by ordinance or agency by rule from imposing upon its officers and employees additional or more stringent standards of conduct. So what the state statute is saying is that there's not a prohibition on having a local ordinance that is more stringent than the state. It does not say that you're precluded from adopting the state statute.
Clarification?
Correct?
As a standard.
Okay. That's not what I understood, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman?
I think that that interpretation is correct, but again, we don't have case law on the point. I think that one thing, going back to the city attorney's comments, basically on race judicata, or second bite at the apple, one of the things on, a little farther down your list, is to use DOA for cases that we would look at. DOA is also used by the state commission, and I have to tell you, knowing a bunch of DOA hearing officers or administrative law judges, that if they had the same complaint, the same factual situation presented to them by two separate commissions, they would, and they already had given a draft opinion on one, a recommended order on one, I've got to tell you with about 99% certainty that they would give that same recommended order to the second... to the second body that approached them. So I think that issue, while it's not this one, I think that issue goes a long way to solving what is a problem of this overlapping jurisdiction issue.
So I just want to understand, Commissioner, your recommendation at this time is?
Well, if I, if, if this is the language that we're looking at in Attachment One?
Yes.
That where it says exemption for oneself or others valued at more than twenty-five dollars, that we, that we go with no gift of any value?
Cannot accept a gift of any value.
Of any value.
Yeah, and, and now be aware that on the two recommendations, one dealing with no, no misuse of position, the first one, and the one, the second one is specifically on gifts. Okay, and so Commissioners Ziffer, that, that's why it may, may look confusing or diff- or inappropriately different. But uh, I don't think it is if you approach it in the context. The whole purpose of one is as a, a part of misuse of position is being given something, and it's a much lower standard than the general gift law, which is also a recommendation.
Commissioners, is there, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, if I follow Commissioner Richardson right, then he's simply saying that the Attachment One, um, but with that first paragraph, he would say for oneself or others, period, and not have valued at more than twenty-five.
That, that there would not be the, the value piece to it.
There would be no reference.
Correct, correct.
Is your recommendation to twenty-five or with no value?
The recommendation that came forth from the committee was of twenty-five dollars.
Can we explain this, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, we had a standard Mr. Carrington came up with that said de minimis, um, which is minimal value. The board in discussion decided it wanted to avoid utilization of Latin phrases. So we decided to come up with what we thought was a de minimis value and quantified it rather arbitrarily at twenty-five dollars. But obviously that amount is subject to whatever you all decide.
Okay.
If I can add to that, um, having worked as a legislative staffer for a long time, it also gets a little awkward if a legislator goes to an event and grabs a bottle of water off the back table and then feels compelled by, by the, the policy to throw two bucks down on the table. Or ask somebody if they can borrow a legal pad to take notes at the meeting because the dog ate theirs. We were trying to, to, without going all the way to zero, we were trying to avoid those gen- genuinely de minimis, to use Latin phrase, situations. So the, the position of the board was the twenty-five dollars.
Okay. And, and to your point, your example, wouldn't an intent have to factor into that? So if you intentionally ask somebody for water, uh, you're asking for water. The reason why the statute talks about corrupt intention is to make clear whether or not it's innocent or if you had illegal intent.
Right, there would be a difference in, in the situation where you were on a panel and every seat at the panel had a bottle of water sitting at it long before you got to the room, versus you coming into the room and waving someone over to you and saying, hey, I need you to bring me a bottle of water. In either case, I think if you take the water, it's intentional. In, in one where you're demanding that, that people who just happen to be hosting you to do something for you, I think that's where you arguably could cross that line of, of corrupt. But um, when we looked at the idea of corrupt, we thought that that was a difficult standard to measure.
But, but, but what you're talking about is more, is a gift. I mean, if, if I ask for a bottle of water, I'm not misusing my position to get a bottle of water. I'm just asking for a bottle of water that's available to anybody in the room.
Commissioner, I think that, that's why the, the question around the language here is so critical, right? Uh, Commissioner Ziff, you had a, I'm sorry, uh, Maddox.
I'd like to move the, uh, the item as recommended by the committee with the change of instead of intentionally add, swap that with corruptly to comply with state law.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second to, to accept the recommendation with the change from intently to, and corrupt. Commissioner Miller, followed by Commissioner Ziffer.
I wanted to ask Mr. Herring why they chose to use the word intentionally instead of corruptly?
There's been a lot of discussion both within our board and I think among the members of the commission about whether the ethics ordinance ought to, to adopt portions of the ethics code or ought to expand upon portions of the ethics code. And it was our intent in that case to try to expand.
So you feel that intentionally expands it?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't even know what people mean by corruptly. To me, that sounds like illegal, corruptly does. So uh, would it be, I'm asking you, Commissioner Maddox, is, am I supposed to interpret this to be shall illegally use? Is that what we're doing by changing it to corruptly?
The reason that I've made the motion is, one, because it's, it's in the state statute, but two, because of the plain meaning of the word. So it, everyone knows what corruptly means, and if somebody corruptly is attempting to use their position for private gain, it, it's a, it's a common word and it's, it's easily defined, and it will be more likely to have case law dealing with the word of corruptly.
Which is why I seconded it.
Right, so that, that was my only thought on doing it because it's plain, plain spoken and everybody can understand.
And I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the questions that comes up, we, several of us serve on state or, or other committees, for example. Shoot, you could even go to local boards. So this would mean that if I went to a Riley House board meeting on any given Monday, I couldn't really eat lunch there because it was accepting a gift from them. And if I go to- They have good lunch too, by the way, at the Riley, I mean, they have, it's not extravagant. It's not over twenty-five dollars, probably not even over ten. But bottom line is, um, so I would need to refuse all food and drink at any meeting that I go to, essentially. And, and the other thing that comes up is that occasionally when we're at League of Cities meetings, Mike City might take the board out to dinner. That would be construed as being, um, well, we are getting confused here, in my opinion, with misuse of position and gifts. And we're talking about what I would define as gifts, and yet we're at misuse of position, which is a problem for discussion purposes that, in the first place. But those are some of the questions that I have that I need clarification from you on.
I can tell you for a state legislator, um, a busy state legislator might be invited to forty, fifty, sixty events in a week. And to the extent that those are lunches or dinners, they pay cash, the cash value that's estimated to be the average cost of the meal. They pay for each thing that they go to. That's the, the zero dollar, and that's how they address that. There, and there's not, I'm, that's, there is no issue of intent or corrupt there. They just simply set a, a simple bar, but that, again, relates to the gift thing rather than misuse of position.
Right.
What we were thinking about with misuse of position, part of it also comes from, Julie has reminded me that the State Commission on Ethics has a couple of times now recommended that the word corruptly be changed to intentionally.
Okay.
Because they have a, a difficult time of dealing with that particular phrase.
Well, I don't have a problem with either word. I was just trying to be consistent with state law, so, um, so when we have a motion to second, so, um-
Commissioners Ziffer had a question before we move on.
Couple of questions. First of all, if you're representing the government official, in an official capacity at an event where lunch is provided, what happens then? I mean, you're, you're the official-
It depends on who you are, if you're a state legislator.
No, I'm talking about one of us. If, I'll give an example, I'm president of Florida League of Cities and I have to attend events. When I'm president, it's a result of my relationship and being an elected official on this board, because I couldn't be that without that.
Right, uh, there, there are, under state law, there are provisions for honorarium, so you could take a variety of things as an honorarium and it's not considered to be a gift. Under this, if you were sitting down to a, a five hundred dollar dinner, then you would need to pay that down to twenty-five dollars under a grant.
Another follow-up question. So for those of us who have outside employment, uh, and in your outside employment capacity for instance, so long as I'm elected mayor, I'm not ever not the mayor, right? Uh, in, in your professional capacity, you attend an event. You intend to attend the event. Uh, and as, uh, uh, in attending that event, maybe there's a dinner, maybe there's a performance there, maybe there's, you know, any, any number of things that might happen in the course of your own professional responsibilities and professional roles vis a vis your outside employment. You don't intend to be corrupt in that. You're simply doing what the law allows you to do by way of having outside employment. Someone could feasibly, I know just the someone, decide to write a complaint and make the case that you have intentionally attended this boat cruise where you may have been the speaker or whatever, 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 uh, and now you have run contrary to what is the local ethics law.
Yes, sir, I think that's an accurate statement, but the fact, the fact is, when, when you're an elected official, you're an elected official when you're awake and when you're asleep. And what you do always, that, any, any description of you is, or any introduction of you is going to me- that's true with most people, would mention your job and you would be the mayor of, of the city of Tallahassee as well as the president of X Y Z corporation, whatever. To the extent that that reflects on the city, I, I would think that we would receive that complaint and look at it. Now, if it, in my personal view, this is not speaking for the board because it's not something we've talked about, if the activity you were engaged in, say, say you, you're, you were president of X Y Z corporation that made widgets and you were off at the National Widget Manufacturers Association, and you spoke and, and they had a, a riverboat dinner and, and you went on that, that to me would not fall within your, anything that looks like your official duties.
But that is your interpretation-
That's my personal view.
Correct, but, but by changing the language around intent and corrupt changes the bar wholly around how it is individuals who are allowed to have secondary employment. Uh, in fact, there are other folks who probably couldn't hold office were it not for their ability to, to earn a living elsewise. And are forcing what I would consider a standard that gets out of the spirit of I think what we are trying to accomplish, and the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish is that you don't have individuals who use their title or public position to advantage themselves personally. Not whether they are doing their job, which they are hired to do by virtue of their secondary employment, which has no intent to uh, corrupt or to shake the faith of voters or any, any of that other, you know, uh, piece of it. And so I just want to be careful, um, because what we do here outlasts the individuals that are around the table. What we do here says whether or not someone makes the choice to serve their community in public office. And what I would not want to create is a condition under which regular, everyday folks couldn't access serving in public office, because we've now created a standard under which you cannot reasonably do anything other than serve in public office at the time that you are elected. And if that's the choice the government wants to make, then it would seem to me, the recommendation would be that we move this to full-time positions, where you don't do secondary employment. Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, I, I think that the, the voters in this state have been very wise in choosing to have citizen representation at state and local level. I personally like the idea of people having jobs and bringing other knowledge, skills, and expertise to their government position. That said, I thi- I think we're focusing on the word intentional. And the word intentional in, in our draft was used in a sentence and in a phrase. And I think in, take that, take, when you take that word out of context, you can see a parade of horribles, but, but maybe in context of how it's used in that sentence, it doesn't come across quite so well.
The, the, and I, I completely respect, uh, one, you, what you bring to this table and what you bring to the Ethics Commission. There's a level of level-headedness and I think an adeptness at what reality is. And only thing I would suggest is that, um, first of all, reasonable is debatable, depending upon who is doing the reasoning. And the changing environment politically, certainly in this community and I think probably nationally, uh, would dictate that I think we have to take a very serious look and lens at this so not to frankly create a solution in search of a problem rather than the reverse. And so I want to be in the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish. I think all of us want to be in the spirit of that. And this word may seem minute on one end of it, but, and I won't be here. So for the folks who will, uh, we've got to just be thoughtful about what kind of government we are creating to leave behind for other folks to inherit. Yes, sir?
Again, we're, we're focusing on one word, but in context, it basically says that a public official or employee shouldn't, in the way we drafted it, intentionally use his or her official position or any property or resource within his or her trust to secure a special privilege benefit or exemption for himself, herself, or others. So I think in that context, when you sit down at the panel and there's a bottle of water in front of you and you open the bottle of water and drink it, getting away from gifts when talking about misuse of position, you clearly are not attempting to secure a special privilege benefit or exemption. And I think that when we, when the board proposed that change, and we talked a lot about this particular word change, the idea of intentionally was paired very closely with the concept of securing a special privilege benefit or exemption.
But then in the definitions, there is, um, for instance, under benefit, and it relates what might be a benefit compared to how a similarly situated general public person is affected. And I'll give you a real example. I work for, you know, a, a, a very famous Hollywood producer, with very, very famous friends, which put us environments with folks that were similarly situated, people might not be, but it was my job to produce these events. And so my question is, none of that has to do with a single vote that I take on this city commission. There is not a policy, a, a, a financial gain, any of that, right? But if someone were looking strictly at this language, they would say, uh, well, you sat in an audience with this, this is person and that person, and they did an impromptu concert or whatever, whatever, and now you have misused your role, your position intentionally. And I'm just, your, your comments to the record now, as it associates with secondary employment, have caused me additional concern around how this gets applied and interpreted by not just you but who might follow in that position. I don't want to hog the time, Commissioner Richardson.
Mr. Mayor, I guess the question that I have, and, and certainly I, I fall in that same category, would this not, I mean, does this apply, like you said, when you're asleep and when you're awake? So, so this applies when you're not representing yourself as a public official for the city of Tallahassee? I mean, thi- thi- this applies across the board at, at any time. I mean, based on what you've said. And, and I mean, I'm not a, I mean, I'm not a city official twenty-four hours a day. There are events that I go to that I don't represent myself as a, I don't introduce myself as a city official.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I would say, again, in my view, and this is not something the board has discussed in detail, that when you are off conducting your own personal business, that, and, and you get something, or, or you engage in an activity, that it would not be misuse under this position because you are not attempting, bar your language here, you're not attempting to use your official position. So when you're there and you're not introducing yourself as a commissioner of the city of Tallahassee, you're then not using your position, and that's an element of this. So that takes you completely outside of this language.
Okay.
But, but how does that apply to how people interpret and how they may introduce you? I mean, the, the, the point that I was making is, is whether we like it or not, so long as we are elected, we actually don't get to escape that title. Uh, I have been in places where I was completely there for a, a professional purpose, and I'm still a, a, a mayor of a, of a capital city, uh, and am introduced that way by others, even though I might say I'm Andrew Gillum, um, or, or, or otherwise. Again, I don't, I want to be with the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish here. And, and I think what we want to try to accomplish is that people don't use their titles and their position within the government to financially or otherwise benefit themselves their position within the government to financially or otherwise benefit themselves and get a perk that they wouldn't otherwise have or get access to. And the intentional and corruptly are, in my opinion, important distinctions around that action.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Again, I don't think you would get to either intentional or corrupt. You are... You go to... You were invited to speak at the National Widget Manufacturers Association because you are a world-renowned widget manufacturer. And when they introduce you, they say, oh, and in addition to being good at widgets, you know, he also does this mayor thing. Clearly, you don't... You're not using your position. You were invited because you were a widget manufacturer. Now, if you were invited because you were mayor and you happen to know something about widgets, and so it comes down, I think, to the facts of the situation that... If you don't meet that element that you're using your official position, then you're not... Then you've... There are a series of elements in this language, and that use of official position is a critical one. And so you don't ever get past the bar of even deciding whether to go to intentional or corrupt.
Commissioner Maddox and Commissioner Miller.
If you were president of the League of Cities, and by virtue of being president of League of Cities, you have to be a city official, so it is known to all that you are a city official if you're serving as president of League of Cities. And you went to a League of Cities dinner or weekend and the League of Cities paid for your hotel and your dinner and your expenses. And your city also bought insurance from the League of Cities or was in the investment pool for the League of Cities or any of the myriad of services that the League of Cities provide, they're then a vendor-
Correct.
And you have taken... And if you did it intentionally and intentionally could be construed to be that you walked up on your own and sat down and ate, or you went and checked into the hotel, you intentionally did that-
Correct.
You would be in violation. My opinion, that's just one person, but that's what I was struggling with.
There'd be no reason for any of us to do any of that ever again.
I was... I'm struggling with two things. One, the plain meaning of corrupt, which everybody knows, right? Like, back to the definition of your mother, right? And two, if there's a reason why there's been an ask to change this from corrupt to intentional and the Florida Legislature has not seen fit to do so and to keep it that way in Florida statutes, there must have been a legislative intent and reason for that. So that's the only reason why I made that suggestion.
And what I'm understanding, for the example you just gave, I would suspect probably come tomorrow, every board member of the Florida League of Cities is going to resign because what we're suggesting here is the same language as the Florida Commission on Ethics, in which case, that's it, because your interpretation just suggested that.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I think that if you were there as an official of the League of Cities, that that is the position you're using. You are certainly an elected official of the city of Tallahassee, but I think that that, again, in my personal view, would fail on this criteria.
Clarification, that was important. And I have one more question because I... Go ahead.
Just wanted to make the point that, Commissioner, that you've asked about and Commissioner Maddox has also dealt with, as president of Florida League of Cities, you are asked to go and also as part of that duty, you're a... Or associated with it, you're a board member of the National League of Cities. So you're asked to go to Philadelphia and be on a panel of local government folks concerning crime issues, let's say. And I think what currently the law is and has been interpreted by the State Ethics Board is you're there only because of your position with the city and with the state association. And if you're paid, your transportation is paid, your room is paid, you have water and dinner or lunch at the panel, then all of that's treated, not as a gift at all, but is treated as honorarium, and therefore there's no issue in terms of level.
That's what I was told.
And we have routinely told you and also Commissioner Maddox, when he was in that same position, that that is not a gift, that is not a misuse of your position.
Okay, so my next question has to do with retroactivity. In other words, let's say we adopted all seven of these. Are they retroactive back to the date we were all elected? Are they retroactive to the date that we voted on the ordinance?
Well, I would certainly say if the ordinance doesn't say otherwise, it's from the point of adoption going forward on the end. And typically, there's no retroactivity applied. There's whole different analysis in state law if the state law typically does not apply retroactivity. There are certain circumstances where they do, but I don't think the Independent Ethics Board has specifically expressed an intent on this, but it seems to me that they're talking about going forward.
And one more, just a quick question, I'm sorry. So what you're suggesting also is that the Florida Commission on Ethics is looking at possibly changing the word corruptly to intentionally. They've expressed a desire to do that because they recognize it as better clarification of what the purpose is.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner?
For clarification, they've requested that and the Florida Legislature has not changed it after, what, at least two sessions, right?
Commissioners, we've got a couple of things to act on, but Commissioner Miller and then I'll go ahead and get Commissioner Richardson and then we'll have a vote.
Well, I had some other questions related to this too, but back to this. I mean, I'm certainly going to lose a lot of weight, it looks like, because I'm going to be going to meetings where I'm going to be sleeping outside because I don't want to stay in the hotel and I'm not going to want to eat anything at all furnished by anybody at any time. And Mr. Jackson is here, is nodding his head that he thinks that's the way things ought to be. That basically means that last night when I went to Holly Heights Neighborhood Meeting, fortunately, I didn't eat the cookies because I would be charged with corruption if I had. Now, I am going to want... I would feel more... I'm just trying to figure out how to follow these rules y'all are putting in place. That's what I'm trying to figure out. And I'm now currently a board member on the... On at least two and considering a third board in my capacity as city commissioner, League of Cities Board and Resiliency Florida Board. These are positions I wouldn't have if I wasn't a city commissioner, and so therefore I would be there in my official capacity. They serve breakfast at the breakfast meetings. They serve lunch. They occasionally take us out to dinner. They pay for our rooms. And I think that we... I mean, you just won't get anybody serving on any of these things, and that means Tallahassee's not represented on any of these organizations. And if that's really the intent, then fine, that's fine. But I think that when we are in our official capacity and we are trying to take the weekend away from our families and go to some meeting somewhere else in the state that we get reimbursed for those things, that should not be considered a gift, either a gift or misuse of position. So I'd appreciate it if you would discuss that at one of your meetings and see if you couldn't get some clarity among your members.
Well, again, I think the example you just gave, serving on a board and going off to a meeting somewhere, would fail to meet this language in terms of securing a special privilege, benefit, or exemption for yourself because you clearly are doing that as a member of the board and all the members of the board are being treated the same.
The same, thank you.
Now, if when you got there, you then, you said, well-
Wanted a suite instead of a room.
Yeah, if you demanded upgrades because you were special-
Now, this makes... This is reasonable, what you're saying now.
Then you would be using your position to try to secure a special privilege, benefit, or exemption. So I don't think that's a problem. And realize the language, at least when you put corruptly in, you're already subject to that standard-
That's right.
I know, that's what I thought.
And so all the things that you're doing that no one's complaining about, you would be fine doing it. It's not... They're not failing the test, in my view, because of the word corruptly. They're failing to meet this test because you are not securing... You're not using your position, your official position, to secure a special privilege. You've got to meet both of those before you ever get to the intent of corrupt piece. So...
Commissioners, Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to get back to this $25 because I'm still not understanding and clarify if I'm wrong. Is this saying that you can misuse your position for a special benefit as long as it's not more than $25? Is that what this language says?
We have two separate pieces of language. The misuse would apply to any amount of money. Because misuse could be a lot of things other than a gift.
Okay.
On gifts, again, our thinking had been that if you went to an event and they had, you know, the little Jimmy John's minis that are probably worth a couple of bucks and a Diet Coke, you could take those and be under the $25 and just not have to worry about it. But if they had a sit-down with $400 bottles of wine, then, you know, maybe that's something that the public would look the scans at.
And it's a gift.
And that would trigger the gift.
But misuse here says not-
I think really what the $25 is, is more like a jurisdictional issue. It's sort of like they're not even going to look at something valued at less than $25. It's more like their jurisdiction.
But that's true, again, two different issues. Misuse of position could be any amount of money. If you misuse your position, let's say that...
But what it says here is to secure a special privilege, benefit, or exemption for oneself or others valued at more than $25.
That's why it's more like a jurisdictional question. If it's a bottle of water, they're not even going to review a bottle of water.
Or a cookie. Cookies are okay.
Commissioners, was there additional questions on the side of this?
Oh, yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Well, first of all, you could argue the fact that every time we vote to award a contract to somebody, that there is a special benefit conferred on someone that will result in some monetary value. That's one thing I wanted to say. Go ahead.
Special benefit for yourself.
Well, it says, or others, right.
But that deliberative process, I think, has been found to negate any concept of special privilege.
Falls under the definition, that's just what I'm saying. All right. The other thing I need to bring up is this. We are asked in our... Last year, I was the chair of the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk. I'm sure they would not have been remotely interested in my assistance if it had not been for the fact that I was a city commissioner. And in some cases, they come to us as... I mean, we did Dancing with the Stars in 2012 or so. And these are benefits to these nonprofits, but they clearly, doing that kind of work clearly benefits someone. So that... We could be accused of ethics violations for doing that, as I understand it, under this.
We have not discussed that specific example, but I can tell you that is certainly not our intent.
I know that. I guess what my point is that I need for you to clarify those things in writing because others may perceive these things to be illegal. And so it's very important for your board to make these things clear. And I'd say we've got two issues here. One is that particular one, fundraising for an organization. And the other one is in the performance of our official duties and so on, anything you can do to make sure we don't all have to go out and hire $10,000 worth of legal assistance in order to defend ourselves against charges of being the, you know, somehow doing something corrupt here.
Commissioner, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I guarantee you that there was never any corrupt intention when I took on that responsibility last year to use my position for, in any corrupt way.
Mr. Shelley?
Commissioner Ziffer has previously, to this meeting, expressed concern about the solicitation of gifts for charitable organizations. And the example that Commissioner Miller's using is a very good example. And he wanted to clarify one of the proposals by specifically saying that. And we have looked at that issue very carefully because I think this is something all of you, as elected officials, do from time to time. You lend your support to various community organizations, to charitable organizations. And briefly, I want Deputy City Attorney Cassandra Jackson to tell you the limited circumstances that the existing state commission has found there to be a violation of that, which is a very limited factual circumstances. Otherwise, the solicitation for charitable purposes has not been considered a gift at all.
Commissioner, but we aren't talking about the state standard. These are a new set of standards for the locals.
I'm just saying that that is currently as a part of state interpretation, that unless in soliciting money for breast cancer, you are using that solicitation at, for a personal political benefit. There is a case out there dealing with Miami Beach where a elected official did that quite frequently and then as part of his or her campaign for reelection, featured in a variety of materials and videos, that he or she's out there doing all this work. So the appearance at least was clear that you were doing it to aid, and you put it out in front of the people as, here I am.
Right.
Basically, you know, the statute is really dealing with vendors and lobbyists because generally you can, you know, help these charitable organizations, but if that... If the benefit is going to... You have to make sure the benefit isn't going to flow to you personally or to another reporting person. So if you're... Even if you solicit it from a city vendor, if that benefit isn't flowing to you or to another reporting person, there is no violation. The issue is whether or not the benefit flows to you or another reporting person. When I say reporting, I mean someone else who files financial disclosure.
But when you say benefit, want to delineate monetary because I think when I hear benefit, I think money to the individual. And the instance that you just highlighted, it is reputation. It is notoriety. It is the fact that you were more exposed publicly by virtue of helping out the American Cancer Society as its patron. And now you've crossed into a territory where you have benefited politically through your charitable work.
There's cases on that.
I mean, that's what the city attorney just indicated.
And personally, I don't think when we're running for office, we ought to be doing this kind of thing. That's just my own personal view. I mean, I think that-
That you shouldn't be doing what... Could you just clarify what you mean by that?
Which is why I did it last year. I wasn't running for office last year. I may be running for office this year. And so doing it this year or next year especially, I don't think would be appropriate. And you all can discuss that at your meeting. But I don't think that we should take the opportunity when we are out there campaigning, et cetera, that we, oh, now we're going to become benefactors to every group in town all of a sudden overnight. So there's that.
Commissioner Ziffer had a-
For the sake of either moving these things forward or not moving forward, by virtue of vote today, we're asking you to bring back an ordinance, which will give us another chance to look at this and gives us time to have further legal interpretation and to ask as many questions as we need to. So I guess my point is, if there's an interest in moving this forward, but we're not totally convinced, I still think it's a good idea to move it forward so that we can have that conversation over the next, whatever period of time it is. But it is now 2:30 and we have gone one item, and so Commissioner Maddox, if you could restate your motion?
Yeah, so my position, and I think we all may have our own thoughts on... I want to be in favor of what I'd like to be brought back in an ordinance so that at the ordinance level, we are swiping right or swiping left. This is exactly what we want to move forward with, or else we shouldn't be having you spend time developing a city ordinance that ultimately we don't want. But we do need to figure out our allocation of time, Commissioners, because we've got a couple of more recommendations in front of us. Commissioner Maddox, do you want to restate your question?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remind you that some of us are old and don't know what swiping left is what-
Oh. It's like like or don't like, I think. I learned it from Jamie.
You know it's tenured.
Mayor, I can say on that, certainly all the comments of the Commissioners that are made here will be- and, uh, will be taken into account. And certainly I will work with the Ethics Board Attorney to try to deal with the specific language brought forth for introduction. Still, an opportunity to look at it in a subsequent public hearing, another opportunity to look at it. And, and I, I understand pretty clearly where each of you have had raised concerns. And certainly, I think, our, we, we'll, we'll try to draft something to bring back, not only that addresses those, but also deals with their underlying intent of the Independent Ethics Board.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Maddox?
Uh, my motion, and again, under the spirit of Commissioner Ziffer obviously trying to move things along when I made the motion, uh, the, is to adopt the committee's recommendation, uh, as to the misuse of public position with the only change in, instead of shall intentionally, it'll say shall corruptly and comport with current state law.
And that was seconded.
Yes.
All those in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion passes, uh, four to one. Uh, next item.
To get a ball rolling, if I could, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the committee's position as a whole on proposed amendment to the city's Tallahassee's Ethics Code and Gifts.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, uh, on that item. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Next item.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the committee's position as a whole on the proposed amendment to the city of Tallahassee's Ethics Code on Financial Disclosure. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Uh, no discussion. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Next item.
Mr. Mayor, the, the next item is, in your agenda item is, uh, option four. And that item says, "Direct staff to develop ballot language and otherwise implement a process to place a referendum on the November two thousand eighteen election ballot as to a different appointment basis for seat two on the Independent Ethics Board, the position currently designated to be filled by the Chief Judge of the Second Judicial Circuit." Before you, um, take action there, I will point out Chairman Herring's comments, that their intent was not necessarily for the city commission to specifically create an item for the ballot simply for this, but that at such time as the city commission might have other items going before the public, that this be included, um, at that time. So I think here really the, the discussion is, your desire to find a new way to have a seventh member. And then we would subsequently have time to identify how that person might be appointed, uh, what the appointing body might be. I think, not in this agenda item, but in the annual report that they provided, they provided language that said the Ethics Board could fill a vacancy within thirty days. And I'll ask Mr. Herring to speak to this so I don't put words in his mouth. But I don't think, I think their primary effort was to have a seventh member.
I don't, I don't think there's confusion. Uh, Commissioners, is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion. Commissioner, uh, Ziffer?
Um-
I'm sorry, was there a second?
There was.
Yes. Commissioner Maddox?
Um, my question is, would it be fair to us to suggest at this point that the language might include, since the, um, the district attorney is on there, that perhaps that seventh position could be the public defender or a representative from the public defender's office? Because I've been racking my brain trying to think about who that individual might be, um, and that having a representative from public defender might do it. I will also add, I have great concerns about the two thousand eighteen ballot simply because all the Constitutional Revision Commission amendment items will be on there. And this is gonna get lost. Just lost.
Commissioner, uh, Miller?
I, I have also been giving this some thought as to who that might be. And frankly, I think that it would be an opportunity to have the county commission appoint someone. So I'm not asking for a motion or a decision on that. I'm just throwing that out there as something that occurred to me. But that, they could appoint someone.
Just because the CRA model's going so well.
No. The problem with the CRA model is that they're actually on the committee. But in this case, they would appoint someone, not necessarily one of them. In fact, I don't think it should be one of them. But not an, an unelected citizen that said, just throwing it out for kind of, you know, you to think of-
There's a motion and a, a second on the item. I would align with the, uh, public defender recommendation. And we were in South Florida, the ballot would be miles long. I don't have a problem with eighteen. I think sooner is probably better than, uh, than later. Commissioner Maddox?
Yes, sir. I, as a seconder of the motion, I would accept, if the maker of the motion would accept, a friendly amendment for it to be a, a public defender appointee and have staff bring us back. Not give them a specific date, but have them bring us back best options for the ballot.
Great. That's agreeable to the maker of the motion. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Next item.
The next item is titled "Direct staff to engage third-party CPA firm to audit the city commission budget on an annual basis." I think we gave you some of the particulars in the agenda item there. Um, and if you want more details, fine. And if not, we'll let you give us some, some direction. But we do currently have a contract with, uh, our external, uh, third-party CPA firm who has an audit to audit the city's financial statements. But there are provisions for additional work. And so we would simply need to work out the, the scope of the work with them and then bring it forward.
Great. Is there a motion? Commissioner, uh, Ziffer followed by Commissioner Miller?
Um, if I could suggest, because I'm the one that, um, originally brought this up at the, um, the meeting a few weeks ago, um, more than anything, I just wanna get kind of a snapshot of what, if we're doing something right or wrong, and if we need to change that, if we need to improve it, if we need to stop doing things. So, um, I guess at this point, my suggestion would be for us to, um, um, have an audit, let's say, of this past year, because we just finished this calendar year, but not for an ongoing basis. But let's see what we did. Um, and that way we get a better idea if we need to make any changes, because we may or may not need that. And, uh, for us to commit that kind of money for ongoing amount, I'm not altogether sure I wanna do that, but I would like to get that snapshot now. So I make that motion that we do this for the last calendar, for the last fiscal year of the city of Tallahassee.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Ziffer's comments there. And, uh, I wanted to, in the discussion period on this item, to say, what I was going to say was, let's do it for a year or two, reevaluate and see what's happening. Because I don't think that we wanna just throw away twenty-five thousand dollars every year if we're not getting any result, essentially as in the one that was done in the past. But I agree with Commissioner Ziffer's, um, modification to his motion that is seconded.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Commissioner Miller.
No, go ahead.
Uh, one thing I, I failed to mention was that the city auditor had advised us that should the commission move forward this, he recommended that the city auditor's offices be included in the, in the scope of that work. Uh, the nature of their work is they audit everyone else, but very seldom are, um, covered by that process. And so it would be the city commission office and the city auditor, if that's amenable to the-
City auditor, I know you had something to add. Did you wanna? That was it. The only thing I would add, and I don't know if you have better practices, uh, from the auditor's, um, experience, that one year may look different from another. And I, so I don't know what an appropriate sample size or what we're looking for exactly. But, um, what's the typical practice? Are we talking one year? Or should we, could we give advice now from multi-year look, without saying we wanna do this every year?
Well, you could, you could scope the contract amendment or change or whatever to do just one year. But I would recommend that you do it consecutively, uh, for several years. That, that, they will choose their sample sizes and procedures that they'll perform. Uh, I would recommend that you scope, with, include within the scope all of your expenditures and activity and not just limit it to, for example, travel.
Of course.
Which is what we did ten years ago.
That's what I'm saying, just at least get an idea of what we were doing this past year. And if there are issues, then we may wanna do it on an ongoing basis.
Great. Commissioner-
Absolutely. What results show may dictate as to whether you're gonna keep going forward or not.
Right. But, but- And what I was looking, what, my question was specifically whether you go back several years or whether you look at one year and whether or not there's a practice around.
Yeah, because one year could be an anomaly.
Yeah.
Didn't be necessarily be a practice.
We typically go back, when we do an audit, three years. Sometimes we go back four, sometimes we go back five, occasionally two, but three years would probably be a good starting point.
Okay.
Three years.
Three.
There's a, uh, thank you, uh, auditor. I appreciate.
Could you repeat the motion?
So I'll, I'll, it's my motion. Um, as stated, one time for the past three years.
Including the city auditor's office.
Correct.
Now, when you say including, do you mean that they're gonna do the audit or?
No.
I mean that, I mean that the expenses of the city auditor's office will be subject to the same procedures as the expenses of the city commission office.
Yeah. Well, I think we're only looking at the city commission offices in this.
What the auditor is saying is that because he's the auditor, no one audits him. So if we're gonna audit ourselves, please audit him as well so he could have a-
I think that's a good idea.
Recommended like a good auditor.
Well said.
Uh, there's a motion-
Who's auditing the auditor?
There's a motion and a second, uh, on the item. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Each of the next two items, I'll let the city attorney, uh, present those to you as, um, each would require ordinance changes. And there are things that, um, have been discussed, but not necessarily from the Independent Ethics Board specifically. So, Ms. Shelley?
Is it number, uh, six deals with the sworn complaint issue in some way taking into account the or, uh, or, the proposed ordinance language that you do not intend to do away with anonymous complaints on a hotline-type situation?
I'll move that item. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Second.
Okay. And the seventh one is, uh, to bring forward proposed language, uh, indicating that any, uh, evidentiary hearings to be utilized by the Independent Ethics Board be conducted by an administrative law judge from the Division of Administrative Hearing in the state of Florida. So move.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
I have a question on that.
Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Miller?
My question is this. When, when I was on the planning commission, uh, we had occasion to have issues go before an administrative law judge. And then that came back to the planning commission to accept or reject the recommendation. But all those proceedings were quasi-judicial. Now, is this going to be quasi-judicial when it comes back to the inter, Independent Ethics Board for a decision?
Yes.
Thank you.
They will come back to the board for the ju, board to make determination from the findings of fact in the written report from the, the, uh, administrative law judge, what, what the appropriate application is. Uh, and you can always change the legal determinations a, as a independent body. And likewise, you can change the, the, um, penalties that, to be applied. But it's the findings of fact of the administrative law judge, uh, cannot, cannot be changed unless there's, typically the standard is unless there is not, um, evidence basically to support those findings.
Got it.
So.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes the items that were brought specifically before you. Obviously, the last items provide additional direction, which you had started that conversation. We'll leave it to you.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Maddox?
Mr. Attorney, you brought up the, the, the potential for problems if we had a, a complaint on the same set of facts at the state commission of ethics and the local ethics board at the same time. I think we should probably address that. I, I would think, my preference would be that anything before the local board would be told waiting on the state, uh, board, because they're state and we're local, uh, to, uh, to finish whatever investigation there is and then their findings. But I think it should be addressed in the ordinance.
Okay.
Uh, and we're happy to do that if the board wants to do that. The, the, as I indicated previously, there's a variety of circumstances. Uh, if, if the state already has a complaint, that, that's one that you're intent, uh, discussing it. And then the sta, the, the local, um, Independent Ethics Office wouldn't move forward. They might receive the complaint, might not move forward. Same thing could happen if, um, the, the Independent Ethics Office receives a complaint and before it's fully processed, a similar complaint is filed with the state board. Then what? I mean, we can, we can try to deal with those circumstances best we can. And again, I, I will try to deal with the, uh, uh, legal determinants that the state board, uh, the state commission, to see if we can get any more clear indication of, of deferral type stuff. But I, I think your point is, is absolutely fine if you want to direct us to, to work on a proposed ordinance in that area.
If there is an objection from the commission-
None from me.
I, I'm sure you should go without being in there.
Great. We'll just formalize it since that's our practice. Uh, there's a motion by Commissioner Maddox. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Miller?
Uh, my question was if something is being investigated by the sheriff's department or the US attorney or somebody else, um, how does that? I mean, uh, in other words, are we spending people's time and energy, these wonderful people that are on our committee, to investigate exactly the same thing that, that others are investigating? That's really the problem I have with this. It's just, um, it does seem like double jeopardy, number one. But number two, it just seems redundant to the point where, is that really what, is that, do they feel? And I'm, well, I ask them, do they feel that that's their, their charge?
Please, Mr. Chair.
That they need to be doing that?
It's been our working policy that where a, an entity, particularly a law enforcement entity or any entity that has, uh, whose investigation could result in more severe sanctions than ours, is already looking at an issue that we will not look at it until they conclude. Now, it's conceivable that a law enforcement entity could find no violation of state law.
And then you might.
And then we might come and look for a, a lower violation of an ethics ordinance. But, um, we don't have any intention, certainly on my watch, of, um, wasting taxpayer dollars. And we try to be acutely aware of the issue with the state. Uh, the state ethics commission won't tell us if they have a complaint. If we know that they have one, I would much rather see them spend state money than us spend city money.
And time. Thank you. And thank you for the time that you've put in. I appreciate your guidance and your advice to, and, and your comments to us.
Right. Commissioners, I-
Say you were gonna serve for ten years.
Right. How long do we lock you in?
I thought I heard that.
Um, Commissioners, I, uh, disseminated a couple of, uh, recommendations as well, which frankly are born out of just the experiences that I have observed, noticed, have been involved. And one example being, all of us in the course of campaigning have folks who have volunteered as part of our campaign apparatus and organization, not paid, uh, but volunteered. Um, and it would never have dawned on me that previously to recent events, that having a campaign volunteer, say in the form of a campaign treasurer or campaign chairman, or any other, uh, official role that we might, um, have on the campaign side, uh, that it would become an issue that they no longer, that they not be able to do anything business-wise that relates to the city. But that may be the new standard. Certainly, um, I think probably our local paper deems it that way, um, as they have prosecuted that case kind of relentlessly. Um, and I think that we have some obligation to, uh, check in with the public on their level of expectation. And so some of this is as a result of, as I've said, you know, I think we, we're trying our very best. And by the way, we didn't just start on issues like this, right? Uh, issues of ethics, as you heard in the introduction of this item, um, long predate the existence of the Ethics Commission. Uh, I myself made the recommendation for the formation of the Ethics Advisory, uh, group that came together with a very high-level group of citizens in this community. Uh, and they made for us a whole set of recommendations that were adopted, you know, almost wholesale with very little exception. Um, obviously, time changes. And so we're at a new interval of, of this government and also of, of larger society and what the expectations are or might be. And so these recommendations are made in that spirit. They have, there are issues that have come up, certainly in the public square. Um, some have been prosecuted relentlessly, as I mentioned before. Um, and I just think that, that we ought to at least let people know what the expectations are as they approach running for office, or if you're in office, as you seek a higher office or reelection to office. Um, and so I'll introduce these and, or, I'll read them at least. I won't add any, uh, anything extra. And we can have conversation and vote up or down as, as the commission sees fit. The first recommendation is, is that all individuals who serve or seek to serve as mayor or city commissioner are banned from accepting any funds from any person or entity that has done business, uh, five thousand dollars or more per year with the city in the last three years. That's the recommendation. And I'll make all my recommendations in form of motion. So I'll pass the gavel. Um, that would be my motion.
All individuals who serve or seek to serve as mayor-
You have the, uh, gavel.
Okay.
Mr. Acting Mayor, Mr. Mayor Proton?
Yes.
I apologize. My only worry is the lateness that I got this. So I'm trying to go through the ramifications of each one on the spot. But I appreciate the intent that came behind them, but I, 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 we, I'd need to-
Are there any other...
Have staff look at them and make recommendations.
Is there a second?
I wouldn't...
For lack of a second, the motion would fail.
Commissioner Miller?
Do you have the gavel back?
Yes. Commissioner Miller?
I was going to mention that we have an ethics board that deals with this type of thing, and so, I'd refer, for the same reason that Commissioner Maddox indicated, I was going through my materials preparing for this meeting, and I realized the number of hours that we have all spent, not even including all of the time the ethics board has spent on discussing these things over the last three years, and we now have a very high-performing ethics board, which gives great deal of conversation before they make recommendations to us. They interact with staff, and then once those recommendations get here, the staff have had a chance to consider it and give us, I mean, one of these, I remember, I mean, I remember the topic coming up, and it was determined that it was a First Amendment right for people to do certain things, and so that's the kind of evaluation that we need to have in order to make any decisions, so I would refer these to the ethics board and the staff.
Okay. There's a Commissioner Richardson and then Commissioner Maddox.
Was that a motion? Commissioner Miller?
Well, I don't, it can be a motion, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other.
Just for your own purposes, I will continue to introduce each item, if there's no second, the commission can do what it wants with it.
Commissioner?
Was that a...
I would say one through five. Number six, I feel that the city attorney has clarified that there is whistleblower law that says that that person is protected, and I don't think that that's necessary, but one through five, send it over and let them take a look at it, and then send back recommendations.
I'm sorry, what is your motion? I didn't understand.
I don't either.
Send one through five to the ethics board to discuss.
Okay.
I would second that, Mr. Mayor, and I think that, you know, one through five, I mean, I'm just getting them as I sat down here this afternoon, I think that they have merit at face value, but I too would want to see our ethics board take a look at these. Obviously, they didn't consider them in their deliberations, or they may have made some recommendations one way or the other, and then have our legal staff take a look at what they are recommending and then make recommendations to us, and even though I feel they have merit, I just wouldn't feel comfortable today voting them up or down.
Great.
But I think they do have merit.
Let me just mention, so there's a motion and a second, I will mention that number six actually is not in relation to whistleblower, is in relation to conduct of an elected official toward a city staffer that might be interpreted in a bullying nature, so it's not whistleblower in and of itself. If the motion were made with number six included, I'd be happy to support the motion.
Well, having had personal experience with someone who claimed wildly that this, I had been guilty of this, when, I don't even know this person's, I wouldn't recognize them if they walked in the room, I'm just not on board of it, because if anybody goes, you can find people anywhere who just don't like us for some reason or another, or don't like our family members, or so on and so forth, and decide they're going to shout from the rafters that we're doing this, that, and the other, and it's, it happens, so I can't support it as long as you've got six in there.
Sure. Commissioner Maddox?
You also have the non-interference provision in the city charter that's ground for our removal if we interfere with any employees of appointed officials, but I think, Mr. Mayor, I think I can agree with a lot of this that's on the paper, and the problem is, number one, what I'm saying, what's on the paper, that the public doesn't know, it wasn't an agenda item, so you're guessing as to what we're talking about, because we got handed out, but the reason I think it's important it comes to staff is because it may not be written correctly, like, for instance, you have, number one, all individuals who serve or seek to serve as mayor or on the city commission are banned from accepting any funds from any person or entity that has done business of five thousand dollars or more with the city in the last three years. What if you were a city employee prior, and then you ran for city commission? What if you were married to a city employee, and then you ran for city commission? What if you were married to a city employee, the employee retires, and then you ran for city commission, but that employee was part of your household income?
And is that considered...
So there's lots of parade of horribles, that there's a reason why, that you vet a lot of the language best you can.
I agree, and so, with regard to making sure that the intent is exactly what we intended, I certainly would not say that a city employee is someone who's doing business with the city, but it might be someone's legal interpretation. I'll read into the record each recommendation, and then we can vote on the motion to refer items one through five, and then I'm going to say something else about item six. Number one, I've read, number two is, all individuals or entities that have done business of five thousand dollars or more per year with the city in the last three years cannot have any official or ceremonial involvement in a candidate's campaign for mayor or the city commission. Number three, all former mayors and city commissioners are banned from lobbying before the Tallahassee City Commission for three years after leaving office. Number four, all individuals who serve as mayor or city commissioner should have no official business ties with individuals or entities that are doing business of five thousand or more with the city to include the investors of those businesses or projects. Number five, all lobbyists and organizations that advocate before this body without registering with the city's official lobbyist registry can be fined up to a thousand dollars for a first-time violation, twenty-five hundred for a second violation, and banned from lobbying before the city for three years for a third violation. And then number six, the city ethics commission shall produce a process by which city employees can anonymously report a bullying claim, a claim against an elected official, and in that, in the, I don't know that they have, there is a process for how to deal with...
Hotline?
Yeah, so, yes, sir.
If I can, what I would do is commit to you that, since we're about to start our annual, our periodic self-evaluation within the next couple of months, we've been looking for lists of things to bring before the board, and we can certainly put this list before them, anything that the board collectively chooses to move forward on, we would come back to you with draft language, we do some of that wordsmithing, which is, we can tell from today's discussion, is, we still struggle with, even when we think we got a wordsmith, there are issues. Number five in particular is one of the recommendations we've already made, not this specific, but we've made a recommendation in this area, but we just didn't submit language to you. Anytime that you put stuff like this on your agenda, I can tell you that I'm going to put it on our agenda too, because we need to share, I don't, I would appreciate your advice that we put something on our agenda, I would not take direction to add items to our agenda, but my view is that anything like this, whether it is to strengthen or weaken provisions, are things that our members need to look at and vote on where they feel appropriate.
Great. Commissioner Ziffer?
I have a question and then add an item. Who do we require right now to take the four-hour ethics class in our government? Another state law that requires us to take it.
Appointed officials as well.
Yeah.
So it's an annual requirement for elected officials in municipal government positions such as yours. We have provided this education in varying degrees since I've been here, I think for two years, we did a four-hour education, last year, we went, I think, to an hour and a half at the request of the majority of commissioners, we shortened it, but you all are required under state law to have four hours. Now, your question is about employees and other officials as well?
Yes.
There is required ethics education within sixty days, I believe, of employment with the city, that they're required to get, there's supposed to be an annual refresher for all employees, and then there's supposed to be a full bore re-education every three years.
I'm going to make a suggestion, I didn't make our meeting in January, so I watched the four-hour video from the League that is done through governmental something.
I have your documentation.
And I will tell you that four hours, I gained more in that four hours than I have through any other presentation I've had, so having said that, don't take that the wrong way, but having said that, I think it'd be a really good idea if we also required each one of our aides to take that four-hour class, and also the appointed officials, somebody from their office, because another set of eyes doesn't hurt, and I think that's important to help all of us keep track of what we're doing.
Well, I think, I think staff, your aides have all been invited to ours.
I'm asking, at least watching the video, maybe not taking time out to attend a class if we do it, but the video, you can watch over any period if you want, you can watch five minutes, you can watch the whole thing at one time, but it was invaluable.
Great.
Is there a cost attached to that?
I'm sure we could probably work that out with the appropriate source.
That's a gif from the Florida League of Cities.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Or their vendor, and they're charging for it.
Thanks for throwing me totally off the comment. I wanted to say that I had, we have to have four hours, and so, the hour and a half that we had last year really didn't help anything, and for that reason, when I got the invitation this time to attend three hours, I said no, because I'm going to have to go to the League of Cities and have my four hours of training anyway. I mean, I'm going to have to get the four hours, or what am I going to do, go sit in the League of Cities for an hour? No, I'm not going to do that, so I'm just going to, that's my choice, I'm going to determine that I'm going to go to the League of Cities and take Melissa with me, by the way, and just have their training, because if we don't have four hours, we've just spent two hours, three hours doing something, we're going to have to go somewhere else and get four, for a four-hour class.
I will point out, Commissioner Miller, if I'm recognized, okay, that, I think it's fifty hours, or fifty minutes in an hour, so it's not four hours solid, it's forty or fifty minutes.
I didn't watch the video, I went and sat in the place for four hours.
No, I understand, but they call them fifty-minute hours.
I did the video.
Commissioners, there is, Mr. Chairman, first...
I'm making a motion that requires our aides and the aides of the appointed officials...
Commissioners, there's a motion on the floor previously around the referral of these items, so I wanted to first acknowledge to the chairman, thank you for you all's willingness to review them, there was a motion to relegate the others as well, consistent with the actions we've taken today, there's a motion and a second, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Ziffer, your motion? I think you had a motion to require...
It can be included in that, that's fine, and they can come back and take a look at it, I just think it's a good idea.
Commissioner Maddox?
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to add my thanks to the committee, and especially you, Mr. Chairman, for your work. You have been extremely judicial, level-headed, and learned in these matters, so we appreciate it very much, and I can only imagine, actually, I have pretty good experience on what kind of a thankless job that can be, so thank you for serving.
Commissioners, were there other ideas, recommendations, considerations for staff, anything that we want to refer to the board itself? All right? Commissioners, ethics commission, appointed officials, seeing no other items, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Rick Starr.